Okay, so this is a continuation of the last meeting that was held last week in the council chambers. From a special council meeting to introduce the pieces of legislation that we now have in committee. So the first one was the local law entitled Registration of and Posting of Owner and Management Information and Designation of Agent. After going through this and having some discussion, there was a couple of components of the legislation that I actually amended. Section 3C, the city clerk shall keep the complied registry as the building registration list. The fee being placed on the building registration list would be $20. All building owners must rectify by December 31st in order to keep on the list for the following year. All fees are nonrefundable. That was that section. The other section that I also wanted to amend was, and I can make that change before this gets laid on the table, would be that otherwise within 35 miles, in talking with the mayor and several other people, that I think that Sylvan Beach has a 15-mile limit for their Airbnb registration. So I would actually like to make an amendment for that to go to 20 miles of the city of Utica of an agent upon whom shall process, be served in any action proceeding with that. Does anybody have any questions in regards to this? This is going to be a detailed approach after this is completed. The designation of who is going to be responsible, we also have to talk with IT, making sure that our systems that the city clerk's office deals with can be added to that. And that was it. So, does anybody have any questions in regards to this? No? Okay. So then, if anybody doesn't have any other suggestions, the only thing that I will do before laying it on the table is just make that amendment to change it from 35 miles to 20 miles. And then lay that on the table.
It's not a question, just I'm not ready to vote on it until we can get codes.
Well, you can't vote on it because it's a local law, so it's got to lay on the table anyways for seven days. And then the public hearing and notices have to go out for that. So either way, that's the process that has to be put out.
Thank you. I'm aware. That's why I'm just saying that we have time from now till then to speak with codes on it and IT. Thank you.
So, one question. This is regarding the registry for the fire, you know, so vacant registry. So have we talked to the clerk's office and the assistant clerk? They're all set?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're-
They're all good to work?
So this is, it's gonna take some time to take off. I did have a conversation with Drew about this, how we're going to have to take this approach. Number one is they're going to have to work with the assessor's office in doing that. Possibility after this is up and going, in order to maintain that, possibly look at a stipend for the city clerk's office to take on the responsibility of handling this, depending on how many people register, where we go with it, and then go from there.
Because you're going to have to backfill all the houses. You're going to start from scratch with any-
Well, you would have to start from scratch, yeah. And then that goes out with the notices through the assessor's office. Brian Thomas does have a list of properties and things like that that they keep in their system, but-
And I would assume that they have a lot of the information already on a lot of the houses, right?
Sometimes, yeah. And that would have to be in conjunction with the fire department as well, and whatever the police department would have to offer in regards to that.
Ending up for-
Nope, that was it for that. So we've dealt with the discussion of what approach that the county council wants to take in regards to the legislation put forth amending Article 1 of Chapter 1 through 15 of the Utica City Code of Ordinances, Miscellaneous Provisions, and Defenses. In general, there are a number of things that are defined, loitering, it goes into what is a public place, goes into aggressive begging, goes into panhandling, goes into solicitation on or near a street, panhandling in intersections, so on and so forth. In discussions with the chief of police, I know that, I know and I'll speak for myself, that I do see the issues that the city faces, and I know that it's becoming a burden, you know, not only on the resources that the public has to maintain, but also on our Parks Department, Fire Department, Police Department, Codes Department, so on and so forth. In the discussion, Chief, in the discussion that myself and the chief of police did have, is that we kind of want to take the approach and utilize the services that we have, which is through the county social service department, and kind of go in conjunction with how we can take that approach with the city of Utica in working with our local court systems to try and have the possibility of looking for more towards a diversion court and not having legislation on the books that necessarily can't be enforced. In my original conversations with the city of Rome, when they did pass that legislation, Chief, if you don't mind, just kind of the conversation that we had, just, you know, for the public knowledge of what approach, why we're going to take that approach, and what necessarily could, how we could benefit as a municipality from that.
So about a week and a half ago, I attended a International Associate Chief of Police Conference in Boston, and I intentionally attended three homeless programs that were being put on seminars by three different cities. One was Wichita, Kansas, another was Boston, and the other one, I think, was Evansville, Illinois. Throughout the United States, we're all having the same problem with homelessness. But what's the, but what programs that are most successful at getting these people help? So what they're doing, they're forming multi-discipline outreach teams with service providers and city employees that go out there and do regular outreach, to the point where they get to know these people on a first-name basis. They showed some success where they reunited some of these people with their family members, got them into services. But again, the only way that's going to work is it's got to be continuous outreach, and they got to have familiarity with you and trust you in order to do that. One of the things I think we're lacking here is that there are a lot of service providers, and they may be doing their own thing, but it's not a collaborative approach. And it should be. It should be a team that goes out there so that we know what each other is doing out there. For example, the UCA Police Department has a crisis response team, both in the day shift and on the evening shift. And they're continuously doing outreach. It's tough getting enough to do, or allow the homeless people to take services, but for the ones they have regular contact with, they are getting some success getting them into treatment or getting them into housing. But I think what we need to form here in the city of Utica before we even talk about legislation attacking the homeless is we need to have a services outreach approach first and foremost, and at least try that. Because where it's been successful in three other cities is that collaborative team approach. And I'd like to see it put here. But someone's going to have to organize it. And again, the police, when you're used in these type of situations and these teams, they're not the heavy. They're not going in there with a hammer. They're going there and helping with the outreach and coordinating things. And they're also there for the safety of the service providers as well. But, you know, like I said, the successes I've seen from these three cities is something I'd like to incorporate here. And, but it's going to take coordination. It's going to, whoever has a purse strings for a lot of these organizations, whether it's mental health, whether it's substance abuse or housing, they need to be brought to the table. And we need to form one team that goes out there. And this way, when you do approach a homeless person, you have everyone there. So if it's a mental health issue, we have a mental health provider that can get them in possibly treatment or even her. But let's face it, a lot of the services are out, and why we're seeing a lot of the homeless people in the city of Utica is because the services are here. So those services need to be organized with the city to go out there and do outreach, and that's my opinion.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And so I think with this approach, I have no problem, obviously, working hand in hand. With this specific piece of legislation, there is another approach to this, which goes back to the nuisance abatement component, and also goes back to the fact that our Parks Department, Police Department, Fire Department, Codes Department are now cleaning out private properties where people are living, and it is a private owner's responsibility to maintain that property and make sure that their building is secure. So with that approach, looking at, like, for example, the city charges a property that does not mow their lawn, okay? What the city does is they go and mow the lawn, they charge the person who owns the property that fee for what it takes for the city. So with that approach and this in combined, I would like to actually possibly look at amending the nuisance abatement component that we have on the books now, processing with that fee schedule, and if we were to go on a private building, have to clean that up, take that same approach as if what we were going to do is if we had to go mow somebody's lawn that didn't do that, and they were actually fined for that, or notified for that through the Codes Department. So our next approach in this piece of legislation, after our discussion, I've reached out to several judges with the Utica City Court, talking with them and how we could take that approach with them in moving forward. Because again, and I agree with that, is it right to fine people? Is it right to do those things to people that are already at a stage where that's not necessarily going to be a positive result in any way with them? So with that said, I'm going to hold off on this amending the Article 1 right now. There are some pieces in there that might be, we might still be able to put on the books that might be beneficial for the police department, fire department, codes, and Parks Department to be able to utilize. But at this point, I think that the approach and obviously through the training that you have now received, that might be the best approach for the city and this legislative body to take at that point in time. So I think our next step, I've reached out to the judges, set up a meeting with them, maybe coordinate that with the county, maybe the city of Rome, see if that's something that we could do, and that's the next step that I feel would be beneficial in trying to address the issue at hand.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know what the chief said, you know, I kind of agree with that, but I think we do have something like that in place. Has anybody talked to the service providers in this area to see if they even have a coalition like that that's going on? Because I know when I was on it with Steve Diamond, we went out and actually found the places where the homeless people were, and we made records of that. I think it's still going on, but I don't know, I haven't been to a meeting in a long time. But has anybody reached out to any of the service providers in our area to see exactly what they're doing before we even bring this to the judges, because there might be going on already?
One specific organization we work quite a bit with is ICANN, and to their credit, they do a lot of outreach. But again, if everybody's going out there and doing their own thing, it's not one organized collaborative approach. One, how do you know where to make your referrals to? And how do you really address a problem that may involve different services and whatnot? What I'd like to see, and we started doing it about three years, I remember Mayor Palmer called a meeting here in the council chambers and brought in all the service providers. And he was trying to organize a team at that time that just never materialized. It seems like at that time, just my own thoughts and opinion, that each one is operating their own silos. They're not working collaboratively with everybody, and I don't know if it's in a competition for funding. And that's why they operate separately, but if you're truly going to make a debt in the homeless system and truly help these people, it has to be a team approach with all these service providers. Otherwise, it's not going anywhere. The one advantage that the city of Wichita, Kansas, and the city of Boston have is they hold a purse race for all the funding. If they don't work with the city of Boston, they don't get the funding. Unfortunately, we don't have that, you know, here in the city of Utica. That's how they're able to bring those teams together.
I have a question. Are those all considered 501(c)(3) businesses? I mean, are they all sound for problems? They've talked about them. How many do we have in Utica?
I don't know. That's one of the things I would like to know. What services are out there? Because if I have an officer that's on the street looking to help someone, if we don't know what the services, how can we ever- What services are out there? How can we refer them?
If we may, if we can ask, I see like about eight service providers in the audience here today, and they were here for the whole last meeting. Would the council mind if we hear from a couple of them?
Please.
Kelly, you're more than welcome to come up and speak. And like I said, I, even at the last meeting, I don't know, it was on the agenda. There was other things that came up in the approach of how we wanted to do this. This specifically, this ordinance, and you can come up and just kind of just say, you know, whatever your piece is and- Do you want to go up to the mic? You can go right up to there and speak, yeah.
It's better in the microphone.
And I'm going to defer to some experts you have here, but I will speak from my, I don't even know if I need this. So I am the executive director for 50 Forward, which is, you know, we're the largest senior center service provider in ITC. And why is this issue important? Because we also run an ESHI program, which is the Empire State Supportive Service that helps homeless individuals who are 55 and older become permanently housed. So now I'm involved in the Mahogany Valley Housing and Homeless Coalition. And I'm actually vice chair, and our chair is here, co-chair is here, as well as other service providers. There are service providers that are working together, and it's through the coalition. If you, and it's open, the plenary that happens bimonthly, we get like 40 people from all different service providers around the whole region, even Madison, on ITC Madison County, that share what they're doing. They share what problems they have, they share what programs they have. And then our, because of the coalition, five years ago, the ICANN Street Outreach Team was formed through the county. And that, they're not just silos. They are working with other service providers. They're out there in our community building those relationships you're talking about. Because I'll just talk from my own experience from our ESHI, it's trust. I mean, people have things that are going on in their lives, the reason they're in, they're predicament. And not everybody on these streets are homeless that we see. We just assume they are. But there's mental health issues, there's drugs, there's a lot, and your officers see it, and your- And your officers work with the teams out on the streets too, to get to know these people because they have regular contact. The county, um, with DSS, they partner. I mean, the, the county provides, you know, vouchers for housing. I mean, they get like 300 people at DSS a day, they house probably 250 a day through vouchers. And if I'm getting the figures wrong, just yell at me over there. Um, and I'm looking to the ICANN team and I'm also looking to, um, our senior planner for the COC. Um, there's things being done and we would love to be able to bring some information to the council and to the city departments, um, to share those things. But anybody's open to these plenarys, which there's such, I, I don't know how to explain it. When you've got 40 people on a Zoom call and you've been doing this all through COVID and everything else and you're sharing and a lot of times it's all about networking.
And Kelly, I think the biggest problem that we have and that's, that's everything that you're doing is always, you know, very much appreciated. I think that the issues that we're running into is that people are still out there and still aren't getting the services that they need. And not saying that that's anybody's fault, whether it's from the county, whether it's from the city. But I think that that's where it has to go through the approach where we need to be involved and maybe take the lead on those coalitions, working with our court systems, working with the county, instead of just saying, oh, you know, Utica's there and they're doing this and they're doing that on their own. Like we should be a part of that process as well. And I don't know even.
It's breaking down, it's breaking down municipal silos, governmental silos.
A hundred percent. And I think that that's something that I, that's the approach that we need to take and, and moving forward.
That you're talking about and wanting to build those partnerships to the table. We did, um, so we had some new board members that got elected to the COC and they did a board education of what the COC is and what it does. And I think that would be a kind of, and we could shorten it, we could shorten it, right Kelly? Um, and share that because then I think it's, it's a good education. Information is power. So in, in order to legislate, you have to have more information about what's actually being done in our community. Does anybody else want to, am I just?
Yeah, no.
And, and I, and I do want to, can I end with one thing as a talking point? You know, I, I understand they're still out there, but one of our biggest problems is we have housing crisis across this nation. We have nowhere to put people, no affordable places to put people. So that is like the, you know, it's a nationwide kind of thing. But if, who wants to go?
I got, I got, I got one thing. Uh, what, what were your decisions around this right now?
ICANN.
Well, we're from ICANN. So I'm Allison, I'm the chief program officer at ICANN, this is our housing and homeless team. Uh, but these are, these are the folks that are on the ground doing the work. They're, they're, um, better come a little bit later. Um, but then we also have, you spoke here.
I'm Kelly Conroy, I'm the director of the Mohawk Valley Housing and Homeless Coalition. We are a hub-funded, hub-designated entity that is responsible for the coordination of all homeless services in Oneida.
Would you be able to come up and?
Coordination is happening. That's what we're funded to do. Um, we're required to have an open membership and we work with over 350 partners across our two counties.
Kelly, would you mind coming and speaking in the mic just so it's on the record?
I guess what I'm concerned about is that we haven't been a part of this conversation. So I, I have been able to share that with you, I have been able to.
Well, we didn't even know you, I didn't even know you existed into the fun component of having to even be here. I mean, I work with ICANN and you know, other, other, you know, not for profits or for profits every day and.
Yeah, so we.
This is a very informal setting, I do want to say that. Like we usually come in and like, we invite people to come and sit and actually have a discussion in our meetings. So at, at some times I just think that people are just here just to listen and not here to actually offer input. So anytime that we have a meeting like this and somebody wants to speak, like this doesn't have to be this informal discussion or more formalized discussion. It could be, we can have a conversation and get this information from you and moving forward.
Sure. I, I mean, I appreciate the opportunity and I first wanted to say that I recognize that you all are under tremendous pressure to reduce the visibility of street homelessness and I.
Well, we live here, yeah, we live here too, which is another thing, not just being in the empire.
Post pandemic, we lost a lot of landlords that were willing to work with the people that we serve. They've raised their rents above fair market value, which we're not able to provide rental assistance above fair market rent values. Um, landlords have just opted out of, of working with us. Um, the slow rollout of the ERAP funds in New York state really had a tremendous impact. And landlords waited a long time to get paid and they just threw their hands up and said, I'm done. Um, so that's, you know, that's one issue. Certainly everyone was financially impacted by the, the pandemic. Um, we don't have the affordable housing stock. We don't have the capacity to provide the, uh, low barrier drop-in center services, which we could immediately then remove people from the street. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that our housing inventory is, is full.
And I think.
And our data demonstrates that, right?
I don't mean to interrupt and this was kind of the conversation that we had with the county. So because the city of Utica has the county inside, inside its municipality, we do have people that are from outside the area that are coming here to, to receive those services, which again, if this is going to be a county approach, we as a municipality have done a lot in building housing in order to try and accommodate the populations that we have within the city. This approach, and this should be from a county approach, that it's not just Utica's problem. And if you're talking about affordable housing and you're talking about building and not, the city is landlocked. These are where outside areas other than Utica need to take on that responsibility and stop putting the burden on Utica and Utica alone. And that's part of the problem where we have of trying to take this approach as well.
I think that there's some, um, there, there's some, a little bit of a false narrative floating around about people coming in from outside of Utica. That's not what our data shows. When we survey people through our annual point in time count, we ask them, where did you sleep last night? Where were you three months ago? And the overwhelming majority of people that we survey in Utica are from Utica.
I know, I don't know.
It's not true.
There's no way that that's true.
Question, when you guys interview these people on the streets, where actually are you guys going in Utica?
So we go to any place that we know where people experiencing street homelessness congregate. So we go to soup kitchens, drop-in centers, uh, encampments, um, any of the known areas where, and we know where people are because that's, that's what we do.
Because on our end, with the parks department cleaning up, with their, we've been four weeks in a row at the Bowers Building on Genesee Street, right next to the Ford Scholar Club. Four different weeks, four different people. And each time UPD interviewed them, they were outside of the city. They would get up, they would leave what they wanted to leave for us to pick up, which we do. And they would just move on to the next thing. And then the next week we would be there again. So if there was some kind of an organization where when we know we're going there, we can get ahold of somebody like you guys to come and help us and do it together.
Here's the problem though, that breaks, see, we work really hard to establish trust with the people that we work with. And if they connect us with people who are tearing down their stuff and throwing out their belongings, then that undoes all the work that we.
Right, but they're inside people's private property as well, destroying those buildings, which is half the problem as well. And this is where the, this is where the, in my personal opinion, the, 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 the separation of the city and those saying that that's our responsibility are coming from. And I could tell you in the conversations that I've had, even with the county and with the city, yes, they, they, they are, there are people that are here. Our hotels are booked, our, our, our housing stock is supposedly full, even though I can't get to the understanding of why we keep building housing and why we keep helping, you know, the municipal housing and people first keep building brand new facilities. And we're not even dropping a dime in the, in the bucket yet. But, and here's the thing, but again, and I will tell you this, that the city of Utica is not only responsible for the homeless issue inside the county. And that's where if you want to go talk to Whitesboro, or you want to go talk to Marcy, or you want to go talk to New Hartford, or you want to go talk to Clinton and say, hey, guys, can you build housing that's somewhat affordable? I guarantee they'll tell you to go back to the city of Utica.
Right. And that's one of the things that we do, we advocate to eliminate those.
But where are the housing outside, where are the hous, where's the housing being built outside of Utica? There isn't.
I just, can I, and I want, cause I want to answer one of the questions about where is the street outreach team? So just in the last week, we've been Circle Drive, Undercourt Street Bridge, Undercourt Street Bridge again, Dunkin' Donuts, New Century Building, abandoned building, Thomas Cafe. So I mean, I could, the list can go on and on. The team is all.
You're running north of Utica where all the trailers are?
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's better.
Yeah.
So, and here's the thing, so where, if say, for example, if you do go to Dunkin' Donuts, okay? And there is a homeless person there and you're going there and you're building that connection and you're building that relationship with them. What is the next step? Because that same person and same people are in the same situation without getting past that point of where they need to be. And like I said, not that, not that it's your fault, you know what I mean?
There's something I think that we don't talk about enough is that there's not a one size fits all solution to this. That we have our hardest to house individuals, right? For the most part, we can get folks to the shelter, we can get them to the drop-in center. We can get folks sheltered for the night and then work with them to get services in place so that hopefully they transition into permanent housing. But we have a population who are hardest to house, we cannot get them into housing. And we don't talk about, um, creative solutions that are, that you see over, all over the country and other, in other countries like, um, pause. And, and I, Mike can talk much better to this than I can, um, but.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? We have the old, the state hospital over on Whitesboro Street, okay? It has cottages in the back that they haven't used. You have three or four floors over there, okay? Has, and that's the state, okay? And I get it, the state is never going to, I mean, my question is, have we got authorities to work with the state to try to make a warming station there?
Absolutely.
We have.
We, what we have, we need to start those conversations.
Those, those buildings, that is a perfect area for that.
It's a perfect area. I agree with you 100%.
Okay. So what I'm, what I'm trying to say though, who is working with the state to do this?
I.
I mean, is it, is it happening?
Can I just try and?
There are some conversations, yes, yes.
Just the administration.
Listen, I'm only asking the question because I'm curious, because you, you had a person open a warming station right downtown. All right, you know, on, uh, O'Naita Square there, all right? Which I, I understand the guy was trying to do something.
He's right here, Joe.
He's right there.
Okay. But if, well, okay, I've never had the pleasure to meet you, okay? And the, it's, it was a nice idea, but not for that area. If you had that facility that's there, I mean, I think that's, that is where it would need to be, but.
And those warming centers also have to be regulated. You can't just have people living in.
And you could regulate it, you could have somebody there, okay.
Can I just say?
I want to turn it over to Mike.
Say something quick, just.
Yeah, this is our, our.
So, um, so the administration has had several conversations with the state about the psych center and the villas and everything there.
Okay.
It's, um, between HCR, between the governor's office, we've had several conversations. The state is still kind of working through their inventory and how they want to parcel state land. Um, and this is something that they're looking at and the administration is looking at as well for this specific reason.
Are they, are they receptive to the idea or?
They are.
They are?
They are, no, they are.
All right, well, that's all you can ask.
It's just a process.
The other thing I just want to make clear is that the city of Utica does have somebody on, working with ICANN and everybody else as a liaison.
Yes.
So a lot of, so perfect example was the New Century Building. That came to us, that went to Mike Beek, that went to him reaching out to the provider.
Usually, uh, Mike's on there, UPD's on there, ICANN's on there.
Right. So I just don't, I, I just wanted to be clear that the city of Utica isn't like not involved at all.
But I also want to speak to your, your point, which is a good point about the county. So our street outreach team is fully funded by O'Naita County. So we are expected to be in the city of Utica, we are also expected to be in the rest of the county providing street outreach.
So let me ask you a question. If there is like, if there is a homeless encampment, like there was, um, on state land behind Greenman Estates, how are people getting to those people to do that outreach for them? Because that cleanup probably costs close to a hundred thousand dollars where people could actually probably utilize that money for health services rather than cleaning up thousands of heroin needles all over the place. And that goes back to the other approach. So how do you go and take that approach to somebody that's living in a homeless encampment on state land with tents covered and so on and so forth? Like, how do you know, do you go there or do you just, have you been to that homeless encampment behind state land?
Yep.
So who are those, who, when you go there, like, do you try and move them or is it, are you tied to it because it's the state? Because that's very difficult for us sometimes to try and go on state land and clear something up and things like that.
Yeah. And I think, I, I want to make sure that like, it's the other movie I, I'm going to answer that. I just also want to circle back. Um, I would encourage the administration to have that same meeting that we had three years ago, um, that, that Chief Williams talked about. Because we are working together, as you were talking, Chief, I was jotting down the list of folks that are working together. Um, but I would encourage that meeting to, to still happen with the administration and I encourage that and I am not getting.
I don't think that I was on the council at that time that that meeting happened. It might've been the two years that I was off.
I don't think it ended up being productive at that time, but I think we are working together and I, and I'm, I'm urging the city to continue that.
I would appreciate if you give me a list of providers and all your information. The next time that we meet, you will be invited to the table so that we can actually have a discussion. You guys don't have to sit in the audience and it could be a more productive conversation.
We actually have a meeting tentatively scheduled for next week.
For next week. So if that's, and if he does, and that, that was through the county and things like that. But I think getting everybody in a room to, to have this discussion, because when I get a phone call, it's like, what are you doing? You know, and not now, not all the time does it have to be done legislatively. Like I get that, you know, but I seen that another municipality was able to take that approach. That approach might not be best for us. Um, but there are some things that I would like to put on the books that are a possibility that we can, we can do as a city and try and work for that point so that we're also helping, um, in that effort. But I could tell you that there is a huge drain on our police departments, fire departments and codes department. And my, my, and parks department. And my approach isn't necessarily because I'm worried about whether or not a homeless person is, is, is laying in the middle of the street. Like that's not my problem. Well, I have a problem is if there is a fire inside the city of Utica and a vacant house and a fireman and police officer or the parks department has to respond and they ended up stepping on a needle or get stuck with a needle or things like that. Like this isn't just the homeless component of it. For me, it's more of the drug use and that enabling component to try and address all these issues combined in one.
Well, I think we're all. And can I, can we hear from Pastor Bowman?
If I may, if I may, so.
Wait, I, I got.
No, 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 can we please have?
Before you ask, so explain to me how we get calls through city codes, parks department, they go and they move, they move people. Why, for example, we have under the bridge on Court Street, there's a gentleman there, the compound gets bigger and bigger and bigger. It's been there for three months. Anybody that gets off the arterial, that's the first thing you see. And I'm told that it's state property. Why? So the state just says you can go on any place on state property and we can't do anything about it? I'm just asking.
I can answer that. So this past week, we reached out to the state, we talked to their public relations persons in the Department of Transportation. Um, their approach is that they will not move the person. They believe it's a local police problem, which it's a social issue, it's really not a police problem. But they tell us once he leaves, then let us know we might clean it up.
And I did for that specific.
And he started with what, I think he's up to like six now.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
Yeah.
In that specific instance, that, that gentleman has been worked with every day this past week with UPD and I, I know Mike, so.
Yeah, I've been there too. So thank you for kind of sharing the narrative that everyone had. So four years ago, um, uh, the county approached us as a church, saying that there are many people who are either banned from or who won't go to the current shelters because they are not low barrier. And so we would like you guys, and they funded us to open that up. We opened that up and what did we find out? We found out there were hundreds. And so then we took all of the politics and all of the backlash and people came here and said all kinds of things about me.
Mike, I don't think that anybody was attacking you personally, that's number one. I could tell you that the pictures that I've seen of those living conditions of some people, they were better off living outside. And I think that that was part of the problem.
Can we let him finish and stop interrupting?
That was after we helped the city out. We were going to close and then the city closed the oval stand and we had to take like 50 people. And so that was not appropriate thing. So again, the narratives.
Well, the oval stand was also owned by a private company. They had to shut it down because the building was ready to collapse and they did take those people that were living there.
The county asked us and we helped the city out. So if I might finish, um, what I'm saying is what there were, to your point, Chief, it's supposed to be a team effort. But we took everybody in and then because of the lack of housing, the lack of, um, places to put them, we were stuck with them. And nobody could help us. And then we had a, um, a, a task force that Kevin Revere ran with, um, the county executive. And we, you know, I tried to say, look, we need, as you said, we need, um, to be an interdisciplinary team and, and each of us have to take responsibility. But nobody really took accountability and under that to pick, to take up the people we had. And then we were just stuck with all of those people where we're like begging the county, please, you have to move them. This is more than we can handle, but this is what we've done to help you. So I'm just here to counter that narrative, um, that somehow we didn't know what we were doing, that we were rogue. We were funded by the county and the county was very happy with what we're doing. In fact, they're still very happy with what we did. with what we're doing, in fact, they're still very happy with what we did, they still talk about us fondly, and the problem is, is that there are so many people out there that are, that, like, right now, the rescue mission drop-in does a great job, but they only have twenty-five beds, there are way more than that out there. And so, we do a dinner two nights a week, and, and you've been there volunteering, and you see what it's like, it's not terrible or out of order, it's very nice and clean and orderly and everything. Um, the, we, there's like forty or fifty people every night, and they're different, who are gonna sleep rough that night, and so I will call DSS, and DSS is great, there's two people at DSS that I have a perfect line to, and they're like, Mike, call me anytime, and they'll say, we'll do our best, and if we can't, I'll meet you at nine o'clock the next morning with them, and I'll let you in, and they don't have to, but the problem is, there's no place for them. So, still, we are dealing with, um, an issue where there are hundreds, I would say, of people who are sleeping rough in abandoned buildings in the woods, and they have no place to go. Last year, we lost nineteen people who died because of overdoses or exposures, um, because of this system, so we have, so what I brought you tonight, because I don't wanna just complain, here is, um, a study that was done, that was commissioned by the city last year, by, um, Gwen Dordick, who was a professor at Harvard, and then at City College of New York, and it has her explanation of what she thinks the problem is and what we should do, which is pretty much what, exactly what you said, Chief. And then, um, she suggested that we do navigation center, and in there is also our plan as an organization for navigation center. So, we not only are, we not only are telling, are, you know, examining the problem and agreeing, but also bringing a solution to it. And so, the reality is, there are not, like, so, one of the, one of the issues has always been, well, it's, we have enough room, and people will only comply, but that's not the issue, there's not enough room, there are hundreds of people that don't have a place to go, and so we need low barrier shelters, and we not just need one, we need three, four, or five of them by different organizations to take care of this with a push for housing first.
And I think that, I think that with the separation of what, is, is what, the shelters that we have here also have regulations, because they cannot allow people that are on, that are on drugs to come in and deal with, keeping those populations together. So, you're talking about what you dealt with was more of a drug use homeless issue?
No, that's not it.
But, but, but it was, it was.
It was, not all, that is a misconception.
Not all, but it was a majority.
But, see, that's why all of these narratives are pressing the myths and misconceptions and conceptions, people think that they're dangerous, but people are so many more times who are homeless likely to be assaulted than to assault someone, and it happens to our people all the time, and all of them are not drug abusers, in fact, they become drug abusers living on the street because they have no hope and no way to get their educa, their medication, so what we're saying is, is that we need these low barrier centers, and so people were saying exactly what you just said, well, you guys are different, and you are, you are enabling people, but if you will look at the best data, and Kelly will back me up, the best data is low barrier harm reduction, housing first, and that's what we were doing. We begged during this time where we were taking a beating from some of you guys, from, from the, from our neighbors, from the city, we were taking absolute beating, let me tell you, I had all four tires of my car, um, uh, they were all punctured, I was chased with a bat, our staff was chased, because people talk, they speak just glibly about these misconceptions of homelessness, and then that makes it dangerous for them and for the people who take care of them. And so, we not, we put everything we had as a church into it, we spent all of our money, all of our endowment, I'm wearing an army uniform right now because we don't have enough money to pay me anymore after what we did for the city, I have to work for the army to get insurance.
So, you didn't rece, you didn't receive any funding from the city?
We received some funding from the county, but they were way behind, and they didn't give us everything they promised us.
But that was, that, and, but that's not, that's not something that the city did.
No, but what I'm saying is, though...
And I think that, like I said, go back to the conditions...
We need to fund, and, but we have something in with the, we were, we had something in with the city, and we were approved for it, and then right at the last minute, politics, something happened...
What was politics of it? If you were doing what you were supposed to be doing, it wouldn't have been political, and obviously people had to come in.
Somebody, somebody got...
They saw the conditions that people were living in, that was the problem.
And that's not true, they were not living in those conditions.
I could show you the pictures.
Do not share them, but...
I could show you the pictures.
I have the picture, that was a day after the oval stand people came, and we cleaned it up after that, because we had sixty people at night, and all of the stuff was there to be cleaned, so that was not, and that was by someone who was working there.
And we could get the calls, we could get, we could get the calls for response.
Why don't you go visit yourself first?
Can I ask a question? Can I have the floor, please?
All right, hey, hey, yeah, one question is the last safe round, all right? We gotta end this.
Okay, can I ask you a cou, couple questions?
Yeah, yes.
So, you, you talk about your church, and the people downstairs there.
Yeah.
Is that, were you the same people that put fifty people in a campsite between two houses, between all the neighbors in that area, was that, that was...
It was fifteen people.
Okay, with campers parked and people, that was, so, you authorized them to go on that property?
Because there was nowhere else for them to stay.
And, my, okay, so my last question to you is, you, you talk about, it's not drugs, okay?
Yeah.
These people come to these encampments and stuff, who's giving them the needles? And there's hundreds and hundreds of needles.
People prey on them, they're very vulnerable.
I mean, our, our parks guy can tell you, I mean, it's dangerous for them.
But they're not just drug dealers, they're, if you, it's easy for us to justify it and be callous about what we do with them because of the justification of drugs, but many of them are developmentally disabled, many of them, all the women have been sexually assaulted on many occasions, these are people that are highly traumatized.
What's that guys to do with the needles?
It's because people prey on them, and they, they have problems, and so they need housing, but there's no housing for them, so rather than have them laying on our front porch, um, we allowed them to stay in our, in our church, and I would argue that that is our First Amendment right as a religious institution to care for the poor. And so, what am I, what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm troubled tonight by many of the, the myths and misinformation about homelessness that leads to this kind of harsh treatment of them, because we just label them...
Nobody's being harsher.
I don't think that anybody...
Nobody's being harsher, I think what you've done is great, but it's in the middle of someplace, that's why I suggest, um, the, the location on Whitesboro Street that's wide open to do the same thing.
But the rescue mission neighbors are upset all the time.
Oh, okay.
The Hope House people and neighbors are upset all the time.
Okay.
It's a NIMBY issue, nobody's ever happy with anyone.
Hey, one, Katie's got one thing, and if you could...
Yeah, I'll make it fast as well, I just wanna say, I am disgusted by some of the comments tonight from people on the council who are making accusations about the conditions of these places and the quality of work our services and care teams are providing, because frankly, I haven't seen many of you, any of you actually working there at the Morrow Center, and seeing it firsthand, which you can because they've invited us countless times. And you wanna talk about why there are people in the yards, it's because people complained when people were staying inside the church, so they got that shut down, so then they started staying on the porch, then people complained about that, and they got that shut down, then they ended up moving into the tents, because there's no actual solutions being provided. We need to focus on the solutions, right now, we have a room full of twelve, fifteen people now, I think, who have the solutions, and it's not a, an attack at the city or the county or anybody, it's, if, I agree, this stuff should be dispersed throughout the county, we, for the best interest of the people experiencing these problems too, but we need to work together on that and focus those issues in that direction, and stop caring if who's at fault or what, get to work.
Yeah, that's why it is so hard in the city to try and help, because we get this kind of treatment.
Who's treating you? Did, did anybody in this room treat you?
Right now, it's you.
Any...
Right now, Sam, it's you, right this morning.
How, Katie? Because I'm asking questions that people might be uncomfortable to answer?
It's not uncomfortable.
I mean, it is, okay, but you seem like it, and you guys are very sensitive to talking about these issues, and that's mainly why people don't feel comfortable with you.
But you sharing accusations is not true.
It, it is, though.
No, it's not.
It might not be, it might not...
You have never been there.
Oh, I haven't?
Hey, to the service providers, is that true? Thank you.
I'm telling you, this is Director of the Black Family Housing Homeless Coalition, who spent many, many hours in a cornerstone church, that is not true.
It's, I have pictures from the fire department, from the police department, from the codes department.
You have two photos, we've all seen them, we're already exploring.
That's the reason that they got shut down and had their funding taken away.
No, that is not true.
It is.
That is not true. Is that a fact, Sam?
Hey, hey, it's getting out of control.
Sam, is that a fact?
Stop lying.
Okay, I'm not lying.
Sam, is that a fact?
Not lying, I'll show you the pictures.
Samantha!
I'll put out the pictures and some...
No, no, is it a fact?
It is.
I wanna know.
I got the floor, I got the floor. End this, all right? This is a conversation that's gonna happen on a long sentence, all right?
I was gonna, I could offer that in terms of the needles, to look into, um, the harm reduction models, 'cause that's what many of our organizations are using, and that's what you can see in terms of needles, that ACR both does needle cleanup alongside our team, but also they do needle exchange so that people don't contract, you know, AIDS, HIV, other diseases.
So, this conversation's gonna happen, another meeting down the road, I mean, we gotta, we have it scheduled, so we have a meeting, all right? I'm not sure we're there, I think we have to wait on this one.
No, 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 this isn't a public meeting, yeah. No, no, that's at seven o'clock, if you wanna sign up, you can, okay?
Seven o'clock. So, we have, we have a meeting scheduled next week, I don't like that we don't have a council meeting, so we don't have to watch through for an hour, we can sit and talk about it, I believe, Drew, that on Wednesday of next week, did I originally tell you?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so, let's plan on that, if you would, Sam, or...
Yeah, Kelly, could you just email me, do you have my email address, or?
Allison, Allison.
Allison, okay, Allison, yeah, absolutely, and I work with you guys every day at, at school, so they're awesome, I really appreciate that. Okay, great, thank you.
Hey, make a motion, make a motion, uh, and, uh, committee to hold, Deckard, all right? Bob, what do you have, you want us to be back here? Bob, what do you have in mind as to be back here?
...
Meeting to order. First thing on the agenda, I'd like to introduce Alice Kim to the Director of Government Affairs for the Charter Communications. I'd like to turn the floor over to her so she can speak to us. Thank you.
Full pressure. Thank you for having me. Charlie asked me to come. I know the council asked me to come because the franchise, the cable television franchise renewal agreement is up for renewal. We did work together to come to terms with the agreement. I'm assuming everyone has a copy. And I just wanted to be here, see if anyone had any questions, concerns, want me to kind of explain it. You tell me what you guys need.
I think that this is, this is just a continuation. So I was on the council and they originally passed the original.
Yeah, we just have to renew it.
Extension of the renewal. So, I mean, it's very basic compared to what we did. I think the last time was a little more complicated because we tried to get the additional station for the school district and the city.
Yes.
But if this is just a continuation of that and nothing changed, what that was stated to us before, I have no, I have no questions.
Is there, is there any other questions?
Law Department, Rockwood.
What's that? Yeah, this is, it's the, we do this every 10 years. It's, again, it's basically the same agreement as it has been in the past. I ran it by DPW and controllers and Paul Buckley, see if there's anything, the problems they had, any things they wanted changed. And there's nothing. We get the, a lot of it's federal and state mandated. You know, we have no control over programming. We have no control over content. We get the maximum allowed by law for the franchise fee, which is 5%. And again, it's pretty much the same as it's been.
Any other questions? Katie, Joe, Frank? No?
I'm all set.
No question. Well, I want to thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay.
I'd like to turn the floor over to another guest, Mr. Getz, if you'd like to speak to us for a few minutes.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thanks for being here.
I'm new to this situation. Was brought in to bring a slightly different perspective to how, you know, the administration comes to problem solving with respect to public safety. On the agenda tonight was the nuisance abatement law. We're working with the Corporation Council to restructure that law. First, first thing we noticed is, the way it's written now, it essentially requires a complex legal proceeding, an expensive legal proceeding in order to get anywhere. And given the nature of the problems, that sometimes they're, they're fleeting. You've got to act quickly. So what, first thing we want to do is, is move this into an administrative proceeding on the, on the nuisance properties. And the first thing I would notice, it seems this is more urgent than the vacant building registry because it's really, it's the nuisances that cause the problems. Vacant buildings standing by themselves aren't necessarily a problem. It's the way they're monitored or not monitored. So we want to devise a proceeding whereby we can, we can do some more rapid motion on an initial administrative proceeding. We'd serve notice when we find out that something's going on so that we can act quickly without going through an extended process and a hearing. But we would just, having the, the hearing be done after the nuisance can be abated, at that point, the hearing can be had and the expenses can be introduced in evidence at that proceeding and levied against the taxes. The owners can come in at that hearing and debate the nature of the violation, the amount. But part of that also has to be a process where a fine can be assessed as well. The idea behind all this is, from what I'm hearing, the property owners, it's cheaper for them just to do nothing and have the city come and clean it up. So the idea has to be to make it less expensive for them to do it on their own. And so that's the way we're trying to approach this, you know, on a, on a macro level in order to get the ability to move quickly and to have this not drag on and have the property owners themselves take responsibility for it rather than, rather than have the city do it. They're not without their remedies. In this instance, they can come to the hearing. They have Article 78 mandamus options if they really feel that there's, there's something amiss in, in the whole process. So that, that's where, that's our first priority now.
Is there any questions?
No, the only question that I have is, and this was, this was, could have been a continuation of the previous meeting in regards to the nuisance abatement law. One of the concerns that I have is that the law has not been updated in over 22 years. And that was something that I was just extending the yellow branch. Whatever the administration wants to sit down and talk with us and make any amendments or any adjustments to that, that was something that I was just extending that to you to let you know that I have no problem helping and drafting and sitting down and having that discussion on whatever's needed for that.
Today, we really started the process where I think it can really go somewhere. And so we got to put, we got to put pen and paper and get, and get what we're looking at now in, in a draft form of some kind and then open it up for comment. There's, I think, a lot of other things that can be done in this area. But the problems, I think, I think this is the first way to get major control over the situation where it combines all of these other problems with, you know, homelessness or people just, you know, occupying these buildings, but they're not living there. They're there and then they're gone. So it seems to me that we needed to get to the point where we could act quickly. And that it was important to do that and show that we're going to be doing this and that the building owners, we're not going to have a lot of time to, you know, we'll give them five X number of days to respond to the notice. If they're not going to do it, then we got to do it. And then they should pay for it. And so we're, we're trying to weave in concepts of due process to make it clear that we're acting fair. But we're, we're in an urgent situation.
And I think that the nuisance abatement law, when drafted, was drafted quite well. And in the past several years of utilizing this, we've more, we've utilized it more towards the police department standpoint. There, if there was a number of shootings that were, that happened at a house, that, that's how we use this law more than what actually needed to, what, what we can actually utilize it for. So I think that having this is a valuable, valuable tool and allowing you to be in that position to, to use this law and whatever adjustments needed in order to help you with that.
After, I think after 22 years, it's time to look at a different structure about how to do things and try to resolve the dependency of some of these problems and that the, just the uncertainty of when they arise and when they happen. It's, I think there's been perhaps too much stress on protecting the rights of landowners that really don't care.
Right. I agree. I agree. Wholeheartedly. So I appreciate that. And I'm glad that you stayed to speak. And that's the only questions that I had for him this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
About the legislation with the public safety measure? You know, I'd like to bring up one thing just so we have it prepared for like the next meeting of sorts. When I'm looking at the local law for prohibit camping or sleeping, it seems like a lot of these things are already illegal. For example, if begging is free speech, then making it further illegal for the purpose of begging seems to be like overtly a free speech violation. So I'd be curious to hear more on expansions with that for, we get your input to come.
Well, my sense is it's going to be tough to beat the First Amendment. But I think what a lot of people don't necessarily understand, that practicing lawyers would understand, is that First Amendment, believe it or not, has its limits. And it's called public safety. And it goes back to the 1930s with the Shanks doctors. Maybe time to look at that and bring it more forward. But there are limits to the First Amendment. It doesn't, it doesn't block every activity by the government to provide safety for the citizens. 1930s, it was declared illegal to scream fire in a crowded theater when there wasn't a fire. I mean, it doesn't take, I think, a lot of legal analysis to, to understand that these things have to be, it has to give, but, but it has to be carefully crafted. And so this whole thing with, with, with the rendering camping illegal, it took the Supreme Court, you know, 70 pages to get through that, just on the Eighth Amendment issue. Was a cruel and unusual. And, you know, from my point of view, there's dozens of other issues that are going to creep into this. But listening in the public forum, the, the ultimate solution is, is just endless amounts of money. But it isn't there. So you got to balance this.
Thank you.
And that's where I think, you know, this comes in. And there, I think eventually, people will realize you don't have endless amounts of money to solve this problem. But you still want to have a, a fair and decent approach. And it may not please everybody. But I think the approaches, the alternative approaches have to be starting to be looked at. You know, particularly when the stories I'm hearing about, firemen have to risk their lives, not just to go into a burning building, but to, to step on drug addicts. I think some of this got to give.
Thank you for weighing in. I appreciate it. That's all for me.
Thank you. Any other questions? I want to thank you, Mr. Getz, for coming in.
Anytime.
And I'd like to go on to the pre-meeting caucus agenda. First thing on the agenda is the Commissioner Deeds for Lorraine Polinsky. I hope I said it right. I tend to buy trees for the man on the road. Any questions or? No, no problem. We'll go on to the next issue or next piece. Solution approving the renewal of the cable television franchise held by Spectrum Northeast LLC.
Did everybody get the latest version? Because there were two deletions made today.
Yes.
You should.
Drew, that last version is the one that's in our packet?
The last version of contract. Yeah, that's the one that's passed out.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Go on to Propose Resolution Number Three. It's the Commissioner, excuse me, of Deeds for John Goff II, 710 Lansing Street. Any, any questions? Any comments? If not, go on to Propose Ordinance Number Four. It looks like it's an E&amp;A transfer. It seems to be quite lengthy.
Who was our E&amp;A liaison for the council?
That would be me.
Were you here for this?
Yes.
Transfer?
Yeah, this one was the, yep, we were. This was just them cleaning up and closing up the accounts. Oh, gosh, I think it was. It comes to 3.8 million is of over, of accounts with overages. So they are transferring it to the accounts that came under by that 3.8 million to even that out. So the books will be in a better place for the 2000, this last fiscal year. About halfway through, you'll see the two, second page, one, two, three, four, five, six. On page seven, you'll see where they're all transferring to.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question on this. I just want to check with the Budget Director. Mary, you're good with all this?
Yeah, this is just standard year-end procedures to get the accounts cleaned up before the auditors come. So that was done. The auditors came two weeks ago. This is just to get the accounts, any accounts that are in the negative to bring it back to zero. It's just not good to see that in the, I mean, in the audit report.
Basically housecleaning.
Yes.
Oh, Mary, the only, the only, the only question that I have, so there was $3 million in funding that was left in those accounts in the previous budget that was passed for that '23, '24 fiscal year?
You say $3 million?
It was the 3.8 million.
What?
Like, you're transferring the 3.8 million dollars from all these accounts into the correct accounts. Where did that discrepancy of 3.8 million dollars come from when they actually budgeted? I mean, I know you weren't here to answer that, but that seems like a lot of money not in appropriate accounts.
It was just overspending of the accounts.
So it was overspending by about 3.8 million in total?
It had to do with two things. It had to do with us not getting all the revenue we expected and at the same time, overspending.
And not having a Budget Director for eight months, I'm sure was an account to that. But that seems like a huge problem.
Not having a Budget Director, purchasing department, you know.
I didn't vote for the last year's budget anyway, so I didn't agree with it.
And if I can add, for the people listening at home, we're looking at about 80 different lines here. An example of things that were underspent is like controller software came to $2,950. So it's getting transferred into the controller salaries line that was over by 3,500. So it evens out. We had the 3.8 million, so that's good. It covers our budget like we see every year.
But there was a deficit in last year's budget.
But the administration really wants you to know the last administration didn't do as good of a job as this year. So that's, that's the translation here is that's what they, they really want to send home that there was a deficit. That's all. But we have the money and that's what this actually means.
We do have the money?
Yeah, that's why it's a transfer.
We do?
Yeah.
We weren't in a deficit last year?
We're literally transferring 3.8 million. That's all. Thank you.
Between the, we are at a $1.4 million deficit.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
She said, "Thank you."
No.
What did Mary say?
1.4 million dollar deficit.
And was that with the 500,000 from the fund balance transfer and the 250,000 from ARPA transfer?
I don't recall that off the top of my head.
If that did go through yet or not? Because I know that's one of the things we were waiting on.
Controller's office closed the books in end of May. So on the top of my head, I'm not sure if that was.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, we'll go on to Propose Resolution Number Five, sponsored by Councilman Member Beatrice. It's a proclamation recognizing Emma.
Emile.
Emile, I'm sorry, Papella.
Pepperella.
Yeah, see. Joe, would you like to speak on this?
So, yeah, I'd like, you guys are all welcome to join on this. Emile was, he's, he's a legislator since 1982. I basically started getting involved with politics and stuff, helping Emile out in 2017. And it's the one thing I liked about being on the council. There's a few things. But one thing is recognizing people and trying to take care of people's needs. And I just wanted to recognize him because he's done a heck of a job for our area. And he's a great guy.
Full council?
Yeah, I'd like to be full council.
Full council?
Yes.
Any, any problems with full council? No, thank you, Joe. Number six, it looks like Commissioner Deeds for Jennifer Ann Gorsky, 17 Floyd Street, New York Mills, New York, should I say that name wrong too?
We'll brief you for next meeting.
Thanks. Any, any questions? Okay, and it looks like the last one's a handicap precinct sign required from Council Kalasmatessa, any...
Yeah, so she moved from one location to the other, Police Department went through, Officer Arundel went through, did the check, and put the legislation in for her.
So this is gonna be a new one?
Yeah.
This is at her new address.
Yeah.
Are they taking the old one down? Or wasn't there an old one?
I don't, I don't know the details.
Okay.
It's a good question, we should, now looking.
Thank you.
I'll ask her where she lived.
Okay, any other questions? Any other, any other business before we close? Motion?
Second.
Second, thank you.
The city clerk will call the roll.
Ayello, Burmaster, Bittar, Carcone, Irvin, Beatrice Williamson, Kolasimotesta, Geruzzi, all present.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Does the chair her motion and a second to dispense with the reading of minutes from the previous meeting. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the rules of order to vote on a proclamation tonight. Second?
Second.
Anyone opposed? We have a proclamation recognizing Emile Paparella, Councilman Beatrice, you want to come up?
So, being on the council, it's an honor and a lot of times it's not fun, but I like doing some stuff like this, recognizing this man is something that makes me very happy. I got to know Emo 2017, he was running, and so that's how I basically got involved in this. I know back in the day, I believe my father was his good friend, and he's just a guy that gave up, served the county, served as a, for 33 years. So I just wanted to take a minute and recognize him. We're gonna, this is gonna be full council, and proclamation recognizing Emo Paparella, whereas in the custom of the common council for the city of Utica, to recognize those who have served their community with distinction, and whereas Emo Paparella, a lifelong Utica resident, has dedicated his life to serving the community, both as a legislator and as a private citizen. First elected in 1982, he would serve 33 years as a county legislator while serving on several community boards, and whereas a strong supporter of the veterans, he co-sponsored the Cold War Veterans Property Tax Benefits and contributed to the legislation that would extend the tax exemption to the Gold Star parents, parents who lost children serving in the line of duty. During his time in office, he would fight to keep jobs, education, and funding local, never forgetting the area he loves so much. Be it proclaimed that the common council for the city of Utica hereby recognizes the hard work and dedication shown over to lifetime community service for Emo Paparella, and be it further proclaimed, the proclamation will forever be inscribed into the minutes of the city of Utica's common council meeting on the sixth day of November 2024. Emo, you want to say a couple of words?
No.
Nothing?
How long do I have, Joe?
You've got, no, it's one, it's one, three minutes.
Three minutes? Okay. I want to thank everybody for giving me this proclamation, I appreciate it. I, like Joe was saying, I was there for a little over 33 years, and we had some tough decisions to make, but I had God on my side. Whenever I got in trouble, I would always talk to Him. I want to thank all the council people for recognizing this and all the other people involved. I was a low-income kid from East Utica, never thought I'd make it. My mother and father trained me well. I came up to North Utica and I got involved, you're not going to believe this, but there was a young couple of brothers and a father, and their last name was Beatrice, and I think they own North Utica.
Sounds right.
And, 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 and they were the ones that said, get involved with the community, and that's what I did. And... And so here I am 50 years later helping this guy, but I appreciate everything that you've done. I want to thank all the residents of North Utica that helped me get elected for all those years, and God bless America, thank you very much.
We'll have our votes, please.
Oh, I forgot one thing, I forgot to thank my wife, okay, hell, I, I, go home, and I don't thank her.
You've all been there.
We have a public hearing on the renewal of the cable television franchise held by Spectrum Northeast LLC in City of Utica. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Second. Public hearing is now open, the public hearing today is on the approval of the cable television franchise agreement between the city of Utica and Spectrum Northeast LLC for a 10-year term effective upon approval by the New York State Public Service Commission. We have copies for anyone if they would like to review. Is anyone for or against to speak on this? The clerk has not received any comments. If there are no questions or concerns, we will close the public hearing. Motion to close public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the qualifications of one of the council members? Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Very good.
Votes, please.
Can I have a motion and a second to come out of executive?
Make a motion.
Second.
Session. Anyone opposed?
Thank you. We have public comment period. Is there anyone signed up? Hi, Jim. Common Council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period, are you in agreement?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Jim DeRollo.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening. I'm here tonight over my concern related to the homeless person that's been living under the Court Street Bridge, and I didn't realize I was walking into that firestorm earlier, because if I knew that, I might not even have been here tonight. But my concern is twofold. I feel terrible for this nonverbal person, I really do. I'm concerned about his health and safety, but I'm also concerned for the general public's health and safety as well. I mean, there's sidewalks there, there's people that travel that sidewalk, there's a parking lot adjacent to where he's been camped out for over five months, that's the main intersection there of people getting off the arterial, heading into downtown Utica. And again, I can't state it enough, I feel bad for this person, and I wish the city could either get him help, but it's a terrible situation for everybody, and I'm afraid something bad is going to happen. Winter's coming, he's got to stay warm, he's got five, at least five shopping carts now, he started off with one, and it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. So I hope the city can do something, I'm not sure what you can do, but my goodness, from the standpoint of something's going to happen, and I just hope it doesn't have to get that far. I hope he can get the help that he needs, but if he's not willing to get the help, I understand that's where the, where it becomes complicated. But how much bigger is it going to get down there? Winter's coming, he's going to need to have a fire to stay warm, he's got to eat, it's a bad situation all the way around, so I just want to state that, that I feel bad, but I feel bad if somebody gets hurt, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, Heather. Common Council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period, are you in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here tonight to stand with Katie Ayello. The district attorney's office in our city owe her an apology. The investigation into her has been relentless, with astonishing amount of taxpayers' money poured into it. It's shocking really how far this has gone, dragging her kids into it, tracking her every move with cameras. This isn't what anyone should go through, at least of all a single mom. Katie has been one of our strongest advocates, always standing up for real issues in our city. She works to make our neighborhoods better, yet instead of supporting her, there has been the effort to pull her down. We've seen her deal with attacks on her home with officials obsessing over her alley in her district, things that distract us from urgent issues that matter to us of the city. Let's be clear, Katie hasn't broken any laws, she's done nothing wrong, but here we are again, watching taxpayers' dollars go to waste. As someone who runs a neighborhood association and attends others, I can tell you that no one is talking about Katie Ayello. They are talking about real concerns, roads, public safety, homelessness, redevelopment of St. Elizabeth's Hospital, fixing Harbor Point, speeding cars, sidewalks, parks, and much more. Katie's exactly where she should be, fighting for our community here in Utica. She listens to what people's needs are and makes it her mission to help. So tonight, let's refocus on what really matters, let's stand with Katie as she continues serving our city with the dedication and the integrity we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mar, common council has provided.
Marie McNam.
Wow, she says Mar. Marie, common council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period, are you in agreement?
I am.
Thank you, Marie.
My remarks are based on what happened at the council meeting on 10/16 regarding Katie Ayello, and I'm basing most of my remarks on that proceeding. I would feel much differently about this issue if there hadn't already been an extensive investigation done, which there was, and at the end of that, there was a big nothing burger. So my question is, what evidence is going to be different in this new investigation? Because the issue is, was she a resident at the time when she ran for office? Everybody found that she was. Are we going to go back in the past and manufacture some new evidence? Because the evidence in the past is there. Valid question. I think the public needs more clarity on where this came from, and again, I know I don't have all the facts, but there was like, where did this come from? It came from the council? No, it came from this guy? No, it came from this other guy? No, it came from this guy that was guilty of election fraud? I would feel better if I knew more about that. The word "primary residence" kept coming up at the council meeting, but that's not a thing in the law. It's residents for what purpose? Am I right?
I don't answer questions for the.
Okay, okay. Speaking of crime, speaking of crime, the definition of slander is something like an oral false statement about a character that causes harm, and at about 1:19 in the tape, one of the council people implies that the last district attorney didn't do his professional duty based on politics. There's no evidence of that. I don't know if Scott McNamara saw the tape, but maybe I should show it to him. That's dangerously close to something that looks like slander. I think council members should be weighing their words a little more carefully before they make allegations like that. That is not cool, and you're going to get sued at some point for something like that. He probably doesn't care, but so many money. The same council person seems to think that Robert's Rules of Order trump state law, which they do not. Last, if you're going to bring an investigation, I think Katie would be within her rights to ask for the residencies of every single city employee. Gee, that sounds like fun and a lot of money, so I think that this is going to unpack very quickly. If you really go down this road, there's going to be a lot of stuff that comes out. That stuff isn't going to stay in one place, and it's going to tar a lot of people. I would think very carefully about that, especially because she's since, especially because she's in her second year, and the code says, in her second year, she doesn't necessarily have to live here. So I would think very carefully about unpacking that legally. There's going to be a lot of tar. Thank you very much.
Gable?
Carol.
Carol.
Sorry.
Hi, Carol. Common Council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period, are you in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you, Carol.
Hi, I'm Carol Gable, I live in East Utica. I was here in the spring with many other people talking to you about lead poisoning in our homes in Utica, because I think many of you know, we have about the highest per-capita rate of lead poisoning in the state of New York. About 200 children are poisoned every year because they have high lead levels from the paint that we haven't been able to get out of our houses, and nothing has been done as far as I know. We have homelessness is a really serious issue, is talked about by previous people, and I know you're having discussions about it, and I would just ask that you would do this important work and stop wasting time and money talking about Katie Ayello and where she lives, because many of us in Utica think she's the hardest-working council person there is here. She's doing great work for our city. We just want you to do some work that's effective and will make our city better, and just drop this stuff, it's a waste of our time. Thank you.
Miranda Hofelt?
You had to leave.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Report of city officers. Fire chief, Engersol?
No report.
Nick Breidenbecker, city engineer?
Yeah, I'd like to let everybody know that we got our results back from our Michelin robotics software that we commissioned much earlier this year. Currently, we're going through it, and within the next few weeks, probably closer to Christmas, but we're aiming to get it on the website so everybody can view all the data that's come through. Past that, our paving program is, we're doing the final topping in East Utica and on Broad Street and in Cornhill on Saturday. We start Monday all next week, we should be out of there, and hopefully we do it before the snow comes. Weather permitting, of course. That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you, Nick. Chief Gentile?
So, best Christmas present ever, an interactive website to review all the rules in Utica. Perfect. I just want to speak briefly, we honored Emile Paparella, that happens, he was the county legislator. That happens, he was the county legislator in North Utica. It's actually the county seat that I currently hold. And this is somebody that still calls, probably once every couple of weeks, to give advice both at the city and the county level. He was in the mayor's office on January 3rd with two pages of ideas and things that he wanted to see in the city. And just somebody that really embodied what it meant to be a public servant, and still is trying to do whatever he can to continue to be a public servant. So I'm very proud of the fact that this council was able to honor him today and connect, uh, gone to a more deserving person, so.
Thank you, chief. Commissioner of Parks, Mark Sokolowski?
Nothing to report.
Brian Thomas, Urban Renewal?
Nothing to report.
Captain Brode?
Thank you. Nothing to report.
Deputy Chief Noonan?
Just with regards to the speaker's concern about the homeless person underneath the bridge on the air arterial, just wanted to let him know that we have done quite a bit of outreach. It's very difficult to work with someone that doesn't want to, want the help, but we continue to do that outreach. We have asked the state for help, however, their policy is they stay hands off of homeless people on their property. We'll continue to work with service providers and try and get the individual help, you know, definitely before it gets cold.
Thank you. Stephanie DeGiorgio, corporation counsel?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Miscellaneous communications, can't report?
Nothing.
Okay, petitions for motions, citizen appeals. First district council member, Katie Aiello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank everybody who was here for the committee meeting earlier on homelessness. We had about, I think, 12, 15 people and different service providers here, and I think the more conversations we keep having in these group settings, the better it'll be. And, you know, a lot of them, they come from a lot of different backgrounds, but they all agreed we need low barrier, harm reduction, housing first. And I think as long as we're focusing on that, the solutions will come. And, you know, I've heard a few things from my colleague, Councilwoman Samantha Klosmo Testa on the matter, and I got to say, I agree with her, if you can believe it. I think this is a problem that is not just Utica's to solve, and it does a disservice to the people experiencing these issues and Uticans. And that's something that we really need the county to start taking more responsibility and accountability in this, so we can get to these solutions faster for everyone. And other than that, I just want to thank you, everyone else, for the support. It's been nonstop lately, and I just really appreciate it, and that's, and you guys all do this tirelessly while you keep, continue to advocate for things like lead and homelessness, and those are the things that make me proud to be a Utican. And that's why I'm still here. So, thank you, and that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, council member. Second district council member, Majority Leader Robert Burmester?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for coming. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to the people sitting behind the desk here. I can't thank the department heads enough. I've mentioned it before, they, they come, they help us. You got a question, you call them up, they take care of you. We're, we're lucky that we have the, the department heads we have and the people that work for the city that go unrecognized and, and behind the scenes, and, you know, somebody needs something, whatever it is. Your neighbor calls you up, you call a department head, and they take care of it. And I want to thank them. It means a lot to me and means a lot to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Third district council member, President Proton, Joseph Vitar?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, well said, Councilmember Burmester. I have nothing on top of that to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Fourth district council member, Frank Carcon?
Lost.
Fifth district council member, Venice Irvin?
I just wanted to thank the police department for what they're doing in the Cornhill area. It's been very quiet. Every now and then, we have an incident. But other than that, it's pretty good. And Mark Sokolowski and his group have really been taking care of St. Ben Park and some of the other areas where the homeless population are actually hanging out. So I want to thank them for that. And just to say, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans, because I'm a veteran, and I know that on Veterans Day, I'm going to be running around like a madman, eating everywhere where they have free food. So I'll probably see a lot of the veterans running around with me, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Sixth district council member, Joseph Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to say congratulations to everybody who ran, won, and lost yesterday, both parties. All of us know how difficult it is to run, and it takes a lot of courage to run, and it's a lot of work, and I just want to congratulate everybody. And lastly, the week of November 10th, I believe is the last week of leaves. The way the leaves, just be patient, because they are behind. Leaves fell late this year. I'm not going to say they are, we'll extend it, because I don't know that, but, you know, just get your leaves out there, and we'll do the best to get them picked up. And everybody's doing a great job doing that, so thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember-at-large and minority leader, Mark Williamson?
Thank you. I heard that about.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember-at-large, Samantha Calissima Testa?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all set this evening.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to introduce proposed resolution number one?
Motion.
Second. Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in, and for the city of Utica within the term ending December 31st, 2026, Lorraine E. Kazalsky, 10530 Cosby Manor Road, Utica, New York, 13502. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce proposed resolution number two?
Motion.
Second. Resolution approving the renewal of the cable television franchise held by Spectrum Northeast LLC in the city of Utica.
No, no, we already did that one.
Oh, we didn't?
Yep, it's number three.
Number three, that's good. Commissioner of Deeds, a motion and a second?
Agreed.
Okay. Be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment of Commissioner of Deeds in and for the city of Utica within the term ending December 31st, 2026, John J. Golf II, 710 Lansing Street, Utica, New York, 13501. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce proposed ordinance number four?
Motion.
DNA transfer.
DNA transfer? You got a second?
Agreed.
Yep. Be it ordained that city controller here is hereby authorized and directed to make the following transfer of funds. Can I have your votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce proposed resolution number six?
Motion.
Commissioner of Deeds, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in the city of Utica within the term ending December 31st, 2026, Jennifer Ann Gorsey, 17 Floyd Street, New York Mills, New York, 1341C, 1-7 county employee. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion and a second to introduce proposed ordinance number seven?
Motion.
Okay. Handicap parking sign required, be it ordained, section 216378, schedule W handicap parking locations of the Utica City Code be amended to include the following: to place one handicap park sign in front of 1633 Taylor Ave, be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected where necessary. Votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to lay introductory local law number four of 2024 on the table.
Agreed.
I do have to make one motion on the actual local law, though. It would be on section three. I'd like to change it from 35 miles of the city of Utica to 20 miles of the city of Utica. Motion for that.
Agreed.
From 35 to?
Thank you.
From 35 to 20.
We have a motion and a second. A local law entitled Registration and Posting of Owner and Manager Information, a Designation of Agent, introductory law, local law number four of 2024. Can I get a second for the amendment?
Agreed.
Can we vote on the amendment?
Eight yeas amended.
Now you're going to make a motion to lay it on the table?
Yep. Can we have a motion put back on the table?
Agreed.
Is there anything else?
Does it? Close consent, adjourned.
Agreed.